Okay, I've got a 7:05 start. Welcome everybody to the study session of Livonia Public Schools, August 24th through 2015. I do not have any audience communication slips. Is anybody here who'd like to address the floor? Nope. Seeing done, we'll go on to the first item, Finance Committee. And just as a reminder and a little bit of new information to some of the new cabinet members, this is one of our less formal meetings, so we can drop them, Mr. and Mrs., if people are comfortable enough to do that, and I think this group definitely does. Finance Committee, Liz will start with you and Andrea will bounce back and forth with items on this.
Sounds great.
Yep. First name is, go ahead.
We have two items tonight to look at from the Finance Committee, and the first one is PEP equipment, which Andrea will help us with.
Yes, as you know, we are embarking on our third year of the PEP grant for our secondary schools, so we successfully completed a three-year PEP grant for our elementary schools and made some tremendous strides in our programming and materials available to our students. We are now doing that at our secondary schools, so it includes all of our middle schools and all of our high schools. And so we will be bringing forward to you a purchase for physical education equipment at a cost of just over $25,000. And we'll go into more detail, obviously, at the committee meeting, we just want to give you a heads up. They'll be coming to you, and all of the equipment is coming from the Communities Government Purchasing Alliance, so it is part of what we call the U.S. Games Purchasing Consortium. And there are many items that you will hear about at the committee meeting, and they are designed for high-interest, lifelong fitness activities for students. So you'll see some of the kettlebells, you'll see some of the different workout bars, you'll see things that will entice students in the more current ways of being physically fit and physically active. And so we have some equipment that has been identified by our teachers there and also that have been in use through some of our summer PEP program that has been of high interest to a number of our students. And so we've been able to try some different things out, so we'll be bringing that purchase to you. And there will be a number of materials purchases coming this year. Again, this is year three, and so we've done a lot of the professional development and the curriculum pieces thus far, and so now we have the opportunity to really determine what materials do we need to beef up the program before we finish out the grant this last year. So we'll be pleased to bring that to you at our committee meeting.
All right. Any questions or comments?
Ms. Oakley, how much money is left in that PEP grant for future years? Do you know?
This is the last year. I don't have the exact amount, and I don't want to take a stab. I would take a stab, but I'd rather email you and give the board an update on the remaining funds.
Or we can talk to the committee.
Okay, we'd be happy to provide an update at that time.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments?
All of that has to be used in the three years of the grant.
It has to be used by September 30th after the end of that, so that next year, this year will be our final year, but then we'll be able to go through September 30th.
Of next year.
Of the following year, yes.
But federal grants always end at that third-year end.
All right, then we can move on to item B, which is the update on timing of audit and financial statement presentation with Lisa Abby.
Thank you very much. As you know, it's that time of year. Our fiscal year closes 6:30, so we close our books after that, do all of our year-end entries, which takes a little bit of time, and then our auditors come out for two weeks in the summer. They're starting their second week, they're here at Plant Moran, because a lot of Plant Moran people are running around this building, let me tell you. And so they're doing their testing and investigative work right now. They'll finish up this week with their onsite work, but they won't be finished. You know, they'll be out back at their offices doing actual financial statement preparation, and we'll be going back and forth with stuff, so much is electronic today anyways, it's so much less time that they actually need to be onsite. I imagine in about five years, we'll just be emailing them what sample check requests they want, or what sample payroll files they want, or whatever. I think we're probably moving towards that very quickly. Just a couple of reminders, typically, we bring to the Board of Education draft financial statements at a committee meeting, and then sometimes draft, depending on the timing, or they might be filing all financial statements at the meeting that we actually adopt them. Right now, we're probably looking at the committee and regular board meeting in November. We are moving Teacher of the Year up to October this year, so I think it might make more sense for us to do that. So we'll keep you informed, but it will either be the October or the November meetings. They are actually due to the state two weeks earlier than the past. You might remember that law that passed, it's supposed to be help with the whole early morning legislation process. To actually get the financial statement is two weeks earlier, I'm not really sure what that does, but nonetheless, we will, of course, meet that target. So we may actually be talking about them after we send them to the state, but we'll keep you up to date with information. Last thing, I just wanted to remind you, I know you've been waiting for this, but we are implementing the new GASB 68, which is the requirement that on our government-wide statements, we record what is called the district share of the statewide pension liability. So as you know, there's a large pension liability for the Office of Retirement System for all people that are part of the public school pension system. So what GASB 68 came out and said was, every district and also community colleges are required to estimate, calculate their share of the total pension, and record that in our government-wide statements. You'll recall Plant Moran's been warning about this the last two to three years and that impact. And just a reminder that strictly on the government-wide statements, it has no impact whatsoever on our fund level. So it doesn't affect our general fund, it doesn't affect what we do on, when we budget, when we pay our bills, on our day-to-day, and on our pension, we're still going to pay the state retirement rate each and every year. So if it's 25%, 35%, whatever that rate is, that's what we're going to pay. In theory, this was supposed to give the readers of financial statements more information as to the overall state liability. It never is our liability, it continues to be the state liability, so, you know, we can argue over the merits of whether it's right or wrong, but it is a requirement this year, and of course we'll comply. So we're working on that right now. It's new to everybody, every school district and our auditors, so we are all looking through what those entries look like, but they will do something new on our financial statements, and we'll go over with the board when we get that. So really, that's it. That's my update. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Lisa, how detailed do they get under the new system?
Very little information. It's going to show, there'll be some additional notes to the financial statements, so you remember that section in the middle that talks about our accounting policies and our long-term debt and our fixed assets, so there'll be some additional note there that will show how the process works, and, you know, how, very general, how the calculation works. So here's the big number, here's the statewide liability, and here's our share, which by the way, is just a little, it's a 1% number, which makes sense. You've always heard us say we're 1% of the students, we're 1%. So it makes sense, it comes out that way. But, so be a footnote, and then there'll be, it'll be part of those financial statements in the front of the financial statements where we show the district as a whole, that includes all our long-term debt and fixed assets, it'll just be one more line on those financial statements. And another note, just kind of interesting, a lot of people have been worried about what that means in terms of their ratings, so you think about your Standard and Poor's or Moody's ratings, and the fact that now you're going to have this large liability on the books that wasn't there. Well, basically, what they've said is that Moody's and Standard and Poor's have been aware of the state's overall liability, obviously, forever, and they've already factored that into how they rate school districts in the state of Michigan, so generally, it's not going to have any effect on our overall rating. Still, when they look at our rating, they look at the things we've talked about in the past, what's our fund balance, that's really their big issue. What's your cash flow, what's your fund balance? That's really what the rating agencies are looking at. So that shouldn't have an effect on that, in case you hear that question.
Okay. President.
All right.
President Burton, do you mind if Ms. Archibald passes around the sign-up sheet for the open houses? And then just route, as we're going through, it'll be a little easier for people to just sign up while you're here, so you'll see that come around to you and.
Once I have it all compiled in central office, fills in some of the holes, and I'll go ahead and send it out to everybody, so you have a copy of what you signed up for.
Okay. Thank you.
For the first place. Thank you.
All righty, the next item is item three, Building in Sight. Mark, you're up.
Thank you. We have one item, as you know, we have ongoing sinking fund projects, and we're going to update tonight from Ms. Abby.
Thanks. Real quick, very quickly, right now, we have two projects out that we're getting bids on. The first is at Franklin and Stevenson Annex Buildings, we're replacing their furnaces. That'll be somewhere in the $30,000 range for that sinking fund project. And then at, oh, at the Career Center, I'm sorry, at the Career Center, we are replacing two air handlers. I know this is exciting stuff, but they'll be appreciating that, and that's about a $70, $70,000 to $75,000 item for those two air handlers. They're actually very excited about those. Those are the large ones on the roof, so, these aren't, you know, shakers or anything. So those are the big projects right now, and obviously, you had a chance to see what's going on with the bond, and we'll be up and ready for school, so. It's really the major sinking fund we have right now, and we know what's going on with the bond.
Any questions?
Hi.
Oh. Do we expect better inside, interior conditions because of these improvements?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely.
It's not just the life, but we'll also see a nice improvement.
Yes, yes. Their qualities, yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry, Ms. Abby, I got distracted. Does she, what was the first two projects you said, I'm sorry?
The furnaces at the Annex Buildings, Franklin and Stevenson Annex Buildings. And we'll go through the bids in the detail.
No, 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 which I, what, the annexes are the gymnasiums?
Yeah, the field houses.
The field houses, okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
Annex is the locker, the exterior locker.
Exterior gym, yeah. Locker room.
Locker area, I see.
Where the concession stands is.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And we'll, locker rooms, concession stands out.
Okay.
There are seniors.
Thank you.
That's the, the field houses.
Oh, I see, I think I'm going backwards. I've been correct. I knew which one, I knew which one it was, I just called the wrong thing, okay.
Any other questions? Lisa, when you said 25, I think you said 25 to 30,000, is that per or is that total?
Total.
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 Okay. No other questions, this building itself is done.
Thank you very much.
Does anyone else have any bond questions, just towards the building?
Looks great.
Yeah, it's amazing, yes, very, very.
We've had an opportunity this week and last, Steve and Lisa and I have been out at our Phase III schools already, and are finalizing the drawings for next summer, so we should be in pretty good shape. Some nice, unique elements to each school, there are some things that, as we meet with staffs, we talk about the needs, and it's been great, because we've had some program changes to schools and different needs at each school, the architects have listened to that and have been able to respond, and so I think we'll have some exciting elements to share with you for the Phase III schools as well.
Believe it or not, they'll be cooking their finishings, their colors and finishings in September, so. We'll see those bids out as quickly as we can and back as quickly as we can, so we can get to work. You see, like with Riley, how much that helped together.
Yeah.
I mean, I, that and Roosevelt really, really helped, you know, we had that one whole wing at Roosevelt that we had an opportunity to get started over the spring break, that really made a difference in most schools.
In fact, we talked about in September, we'd like to, the board would be so inclined, maybe before the study session in September, to have a chance to see Roosevelt in the new ASD wing that we built for those classrooms and some of the modifications made, so if you'd like to do that, that, they should be certainly up and running by that time. But if you'd like to do that, we can certainly talk to Mr. Johnson about that with Building in Sight, and then determine if we'd like to visit before the study session in September out of Roosevelt.
That'd be great.
And I'm interested. Is there anything to add?
Sure. Absolutely.
Okay, great. All righty. Personnel Committee is next. Jen, you're up.
Yeah, we have one item. Mr. Francis.
AppleTrack is an online application system. It's something that we, are one of the few districts actually in the area that don't use. There are 300-plus districts across the state that use AppleTrack, and we're looking to make that purchase and upgrade the system that we've had, which is, from both an IT perspective as well as the HR perspective, quite dated. The new AppleTrack system will have a capability, has multiple capabilities, that we don't even know yet, because we have to get trained on it. But one of the greatest features is that I'm thinking of, just because of what we're going through now, you can sort through and get applicants, when you have 200, nearly 200 applicants like we did for our LPS posting, sorted down based on the criteria you wish, versus the way we did it with this one, was you look through each piece and say, "Let's look at the resume, let's look at the application." So it's going to be a lifesaver in that alone. But again, multiple, multiple uses for, to help us find the best candidates, and another great piece is that it will be, people currently have to find LPS's website, whereas the AppleTrack system, because it's so, so large and across the state, and they also put all of our postings on K12jobs.com, people will find us and we will find people much more readily. So if someone wants to move into the area, they know the family's moving, they don't really know Livonia, they wouldn't be able to find our website, they could automatically, we can find them. So there are some really great pieces with regard to both finding candidates, as well as whittling candidates down for screening. And there's a million other applications that we'll get trained in and we'll learn. I spoke to an HR person named Wayne West, and she's been using it for seven years, and she's like, "I'm still discovering, I couldn't believe doing this job without any owner." So, cost-wise, it's going to be $10,000 for an annual fee, you know, one-time $1,000 setup for the first year, compared to what we currently use on a renewal basis, which is $1,800 and some change, it is more, but it's far outweighs what we currently have.
Yeah, so talk about how it pushes out.
Oh, you know, yeah, yeah.
Or the efficiencies.
I didn't want to go on, yeah, I didn't want to ramble on, sound like I'm selling it for them. But another one of the pieces that is very important, which we find in the summer, we have industry postings that we send out to building secretaries, and the building secretaries then forward them along with their staff. We have elementary secretaries who aren't even back yet, because they come back Monday, so if they're not checking their emails throughout the summer and then forwarding along with the staff, or missing that, or at least our staff members are missing potential job postings that are internal, this system, we can simply, boom, all staff, click, go, take over to everybody. We can, we can pick and choose, if Churchill has a job posting, the Churchill principal and administrators don't need to see all the postings, we can just set it up so they see their postings. They can see them, they can go through them, they can screen. So, and again, these are just some of the, like, baseline items that it can do. Yeah, very excited for it. The office is very excited for it.
So this won't be something that will formally come before the board, but we just wanted to let you know, it's just one more way we're moving forward, moving a little more into the 21st century, both for our end user, our administrators here and our HR folks, but also for our applicants. It's one more way to show Livonia being a little bit more progressive and moving in the direction that, as Phil has said, many other districts have already gone.
Any questions?
Is it, since it's so widely used in the state, can applicants, like, have a profile or whatever, and then they can?
They build it once, and then they can click on the job that they want in life work, which makes it easy for them as well.
Okay. So we've, I've heard of folks referring to or asking whether or not we have a common app. So in essence, this is going to be the common app that they're looking for.
Pretty much, pretty much. It's the same, it's the same thing that when, just using a couple of examples, Oakland County Schools and Wayne Resa, when they have, they all have AppleTrack running. There's minus a couple of districts, and we were one of them for a while, that just wasn't on there. So if you went through, again, let's just take Oakland County for example, if you went through Oakland, K-12, and did an application, it's going out to all the participating districts that use that system. A couple of them don't use it, they're not getting those applicants. Those applicants would have to then go find that district to apply.
You could also just, like, pick a job, if that's all you wanted to go out. Like, you could say, "I'm just interested in teaching at such and such a school."
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The individual, the applicant.
Just any applicant, but ours.
Because you want to. But if you want to.
And we get published out much broader than we currently are.
It's going to become important, probably all have been reading the newspapers, the reduced enrollment in education programs at universities, fewer people are becoming teachers, fewer young students are deciding to become teachers right now, and it's going to be more important for us to compete for the best and the brightest, which we have always attracted, but the competition will be greater, the pool will be smaller, and anything we can do to market ourselves to that pool of candidates is going to be to our advantage. Well, I see our efficiency too, such as saving of copying. We have a tremendous copying mill right now, what we do, we are interviewing in stacks and stacks of color-coded paper, and I think this will help us migrate away from.
Hopefully not. Any other questions? That concludes Personnel.
All right. Next up is Policy. Jenny.
We have one item for Policy, and Andrea, if you could cover that for us, I would be happy to.
So, as I've shared with Mrs. Burton, we are going to continue moving through the policy updates. One of the things that she has brought to my attention is that there are a number of policies that have been reviewed, and that simply need to have that information stated at the top of each policy, and then added back to the rolls, and so Joe will be working with me on that, and we will get all of those up. So again, those are the policies that you looked at, did not make any changes, but they may still be dated 1998 or 1988 in some cases, and so they will just say reviewed with the current date, and so we are in the process now of updating those. Also, we are, both Dr. Terrell and Ms. Archibald are working with Mr. Anderson, and we are going through a civil rights audit, correct?
Correct.
Do you want to just give a quick, 30-second overview of what that is, and I'll talk a little bit about the policies that may be related to that?
Just in essence, the Office of Civil Rights is becoming an act of great to do a review of our civil rights compliance, mainly with respect to CTE classes, and, but again, they'll look at Title II, Title VI, age discrimination, like Section 504 harassment. So they'll, they'll start looking at the CTE programs, but then look at a variety of policies, and we participated in the webinar last week, and have begun the evidence collection, and in preparation for that, for that visit, and we'll share additional details as we begin, again, they're coming in on October 3.
So again, these happen routinely, this is just part of a process, and Career Center had one last, about.
1999 is sometime around then, is my recollection.
And so there were a couple of instances that I shared with Mrs. Burton, where it may reference that a specific director is responsible for, as a reporting person for, for instance, Title IX or something like that. And so one of the things that Jen and Steve found out when they watched the webinar in preparation for when you have a visit, they indicated that if there are small changes like that that need to be made, that you wait to do that until after they've visited, so that if they have any recommended changes to policies, you've not gone, just gone through a review of the policy to simply make a name or a title change, but you've waited and you've gone through, and if there are any other changes based on current law and things that they want you to make, that there's no penalty to the district, that they would just encourage you to utilize this current wording, which happens all the time. As you know, we recently updated our bullying policy, right, when the legislature added the cyberbullying piece. So something like that. So if there are pieces they suggested that we go ahead and wait, so we were initially going to bring some of those to you, and so we've decided, based on the information given to us, that we'll wait through that, and then if there are changes, we'll bring all of those policies at one time, and make any necessary recommendations, we'll bring those, obviously, first to a study session, and then go through our normal process. But just wanted to give you a quick update on that. And then the last piece that Mrs. Wozniak had brought to me was, in some of our administrative procedures, there are a couple of places where agency names or phone numbers have changed, and so those are, those administrative procedures are not something that have to go through Board of Education meetings, as you know, for readings and approval, and so when we make changes like that, that are to update, I will share those with Mrs. Burton in our weekly meetings, and I'd be happy to share those here, but those are really just so that if stat pulls up a board policy, a phone number or an address that they see is more current, and so we would go ahead and make those changes to administrative procedures, not to board policy. And in most cases, those aren't included in our board policy anyway. But that's just a quick FYI, as Joe and I have talked about some of those pieces, and as Colleen and I have talked about, okay, what are those next steps? Because we want to continue that great work you've been doing, which is making your way through those many, many policies and procedures. Any questions on that? Yes. Who will be conducting the civil rights audit?
Yeah, civil rights.
Is that spelled wrong?
Yes.
Yeah, it's spelled.
Yes.
And the administrative, and following up on what Andrea said, we will all be looking at the changes to the administrative procedures, as we have in the past. We won't be, we don't need to vote on them, we don't need to act on them, but we will be.
Will update them.
Yeah, update on all of them. And we'll, and we're continuing the same, taking a chunk at a time of all of our, all of our policies. And continuing to plot through and get them all taken care of.
Yes. Anything else? Does anybody else have any questions? We are good.
Committee of the Whole. Meeting procedures. We have a few new cabinet members that we're happy to have join us. Jen's relatively new, and Phil is new, so now we'll just briefly review, number one, the types of meetings, because it was when Liz was first brought onto the board that it came to my attention that not everybody, especially folks who are just beginning to get involved with our Board of Education, not everyone is sure what the different meetings functions are, because there really are three tiers to our levels of meetings. But the first level is a study session. Most items, not all, but most items come before a study session, and that's just a brief run, run-through of things that are coming down the road, that's the most common thing that goes into a study session. Sometimes it's something that the board wants to dive a little bit deeper into, that's more governance-oriented, as opposed to decisions that the board is going to have to make for the, on behalf of the district. But those are study sessions, this is a perfect example of one tonight. It's a little bit less formal, and it's a nice time to just get out some ideas and then see what's coming down the road for the board. Most items will then go from a study session to a Committee of the Whole. Committee of the Whole is where things are bantered back and forth. We've got a lot of questions, a lot of answers, perhaps some requests of administration for additional information, but there is no voting that takes place at a Committee of the Whole meeting, which a lot of folks are thrown by that. You know, you talk about to death, and then you don't do anything. We do. What we do is either decide that we're going to discuss it further, and it'll go on an upcoming Committee of the Whole agenda for further discussion, or if we're finished with our work and getting down to the decision-making process, we'll place it on an upcoming agenda for a general meeting or a regular meeting, or, as some folks refer to it, as a voting meeting. So that third level of meeting is the meeting where we are at the long, straight table, you know, along the one side of the room, and that's more, that is what I refer to as a voting meeting, or a general meeting. You'll see far less discussion at those meetings of items, because we've now beefed them up at least twice typically, sometimes more than that, and then we're going to go ahead and vote on them. So it's, those meetings are more formal. What I would encourage those, on both the board and the administration, to do is try to get the word out to folks, if they are of the type that are interested in our board meetings, it's a small percentage of folks, but those folks do like more information, really encourage them to tune into the Committee of the Whole meetings, because usually when they like more information, it's more of the questions and answers and back and forth that they're looking for, it's not only the vote at the end. And if, if folks are under the impression that only the vote at the end is what happens, they could be, they could have a serious misinterpretation of how much work goes into those votes. So do encourage folks, if they're interested in the board work at all, to tune into the Committee of the Whole meetings, that are, I think they're the most important meetings that we have, really. Then further, at either Committee of the Whole meetings, which, which again, are the ones that are taking place around that square table downstairs, or the formation that we put our tables into, both those Committee of the Whole meetings and the formal voting meetings, the general meetings, typically, as you've, you've seen the format that we've followed, the person who's the chair of that committee on the board will begin to address that item. But if we have questions, or if it's a voting meeting, we'll bring up the next agenda, item on the agenda, we'll introduce it, we'll get a motion on the table, which we're required to do, because the board cannot have discussion about an item before there's a motion and a second. So typically, when I will, it's the voting meeting, I'll introduce the item, I'll ask for a motion right off the bat, so that the board is free to have discussion. If the item is seconded, which it typically is, then the board is free for discussion. At that point, I'm going to look right down at the bottom of the page if there's any question, and there's going to be a cabinet member listed down near the bottom of the page. And there's going to be a cabinet member listed down near the bottom of the page. If your name is on there, you're up next, because we're going to call on you to go ahead and introduce this item for the board. Lisa gets an awful lot of them. You've got many hats. But there's, there are many times that different cabinet members are going to be called on to give a brief overview to the board. Again, if it's a voting meeting or a general meeting, it's not the first time you're talking about it with the board and we're going to know what you're talking about. A lot of that is for the benefit of the public. So they have an overview, because most often folks only tune into the voting meeting or the general meeting. But if you're in charge of that item or if your item is coming up for a vote, do be prepared that we will call on you during that meeting to give some kind of an introduction. After your introductory remarks on that item or your summary remarks on that item, there can be questions and answers from the board and then we'll go ahead and, if there are questions on it, you're going to be the one likely to be answering that. A lot of the time, Andrea's going to be able to fill in some information also, but if it's your item, just be aware so you're not caught off guard that you're going to be called on. So, let's see here. I think that's it with board procedures. Are there any questions from either board members or cabinet on board procedures, on meeting procedures?
Maybe just a clarification that when you talked about if you call for a motion, it's normally seconded. A second on a motion doesn't necessarily mean that that person supports the motion. It's only used to get it to the discussion stage. Without a second, you can't even discuss it, doesn't go any further.
There's two people who want to talk about it.
There's at least two people who want to talk about it. Correct.
That's a good point. There have been a number of occasions in the past when it's an item that may not be supported largely by the board. Some items come to the board because they're necessities. Some, there was a recent situation where the board had to vote on an item to put School Cast Millage on the board, onto their, onto the clerk's office for a vote. The board did not take a position on it one way or the other, but we did in order to even discuss it. We had to have a motion, we had to have a second so we could, we could even talk about it. So, how that all works. Any other questions or thoughts or...
Mrs. Burton, when there's a motion on the table and someone wants to change it or...
Amended?
Or amended, so that has to have a second as well? Do you have to finish the second motion?
It does. It has to have a second.
Before you go back to the first motion?
You do.
Is that how that works?
You do. If there's a second, if there, if there's a motion on the table and then somebody proposes a, or makes a second amended motion, sometimes it's for a different thought process that they'd rather see us go down. Sometimes it's simply a grammatical type of a situation. There's an error that needs to be corrected. That second motion is made, it does have to have a second for it to proceed. If it does not have a second, it does not proceed and we go back to the first motion. If the original motion has been made and it was seconded, somewhere during the discussions a person makes a second amended motion, that would require a second before that motion could be discussed. If that motion was made and had a second, it could be discussed. After it is discussed, has comments, questions by the board, then that motion is voted upon. If it passes, we go on to the next item on our agenda. If it does not pass, we go back to the first motion that was made and seconded and vote on that motion.
Thank you.
So it's, it is something that does periodically happen and it's something that we need to make sure that we're staying brushed up on, because you want to make sure that you're aware. And it's one of the things too, that it's, it's one of the courtesies to the board and to the administration, if you know that you may be amending a motion. It's a courtesy that I know would be appreciated myself, just to give one another a heads-up on that, just so that we can be prepared to make sure we have our procedure exactly correct, because we certainly do want to be following exactly the correct procedures on such things. So it's, MASB has taught, no surprises, 175 times, and there are lots of different reasons for that. So, but that's, that's why I've been making sure that we do that, because it's, that can get a little, little tricky to make sure you get through that process.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. It's not...
Roberts had a madness to his method.
Yeah, he did, yes. Yep. So, any other questions on procedures or meetings or that type of thing?
All righty. Review of the board's self-evaluation. Diane, would you like to speak to this item since you were the one to kind of took it and ran with it?
Well, as you remember, several months ago, we had the opportunity to participate in MASB's board self-evaluation assessment, which we all did. They gave us a limited amount of time. We all had, and I was on your backs. Come on, get it done. And they gave us a report. We've all had many months to look at this report and kind of digest it. I think from the report, there weren't really any surprises. The areas were leadership, ship, academic performance and accountability, board responsibility, board effectiveness, data-driven decision-making, board superintendent relationships and community So we have the report in front of us. What do we, I guess the question is, what do we want to do with it? MASB is offering two routes that you can go and Colleen, do you want to address that?
Sure. We can take this information, which is valuable information to have, and our board has done a number of governance workshops, so a lot of this information is not, like I said, it's not a surprise to us. We know where our strengths and weaknesses, we know where we've made a lot of work, a lot of progress, and we know areas that we'd like to continue making progress in. But what MASB has provided is three levels of this, assistance for the board's self-evaluation. The first is this report as it stands, which is exactly the data that we gave them compiled. Every comment and mathematical equations on those comments, but every comment as it was stated to MASB goes in. If we'd like to take it to the next level, MASB can give some recommendations based on this report to the board in a written format. That's, I believe that's, I wanted to say it was 300...
There's a charge to it.
Yeah, there is a charge.
It's a lesser of the charges.
Right. This is, this one is free, the one in front of you that we've had for some time. This is free. There's a charge if we would like to get written recommendations to the board. If we would like to have MASB come in and do an in-person workshop on this report with us, strengths and weaknesses, our areas of concern or recommendations for improvement, they can come in and do a more in-depth, in-person workshop with us on it. So that's really a decision that this board needs to make, is are we satisfied with this, which is what I would call step one, or would we like to employ MASB to give us their recommendations, which is step two, or would we like to have MASB come in and do a complete in-person workshop with us on this information, which is step three.
Which is also costly.
It's more costly.
A thousand dollars.
It is, I believe so, yeah.
I think we definitely need to get some additional feedback on this, just because we did it and there's a lot of buyers and stuff, and I think an outside source evaluating and giving us the written recommendation, I would really like to see that written recommendation. I think a lot of these, this information in here that we see is stuff that we have already had multiple in-person sessions on. So I'm not sure that that is effective right now and I also think we've got some things that are coming up that we need to save our in-person time. Our in-person, I want to say class time, what is the word I'm looking for?
Workshop time.
Workshop time. We've got some other issues that we need to deal with and there are only so many hours in a day, but I would really like to see the MASB written, the write-up on this.
Okay, recommendations.
Yes.
Other thoughts?
Is that what it would be, is recommendations on what to do to improve?
That's my understanding, is their analysis of this information. Right now, it's the data handed right back to us in a collective format. If we'd like the recommendations based on the data, that's the next step, the written recommendations.
We did this in early April. We need to redo the survey?
I don't think so.
That was my question, especially with the superintendent, one, a new superintendent coming in and, you know, that may have some bearing on it too.
And we can still do it a second time for free?
I don't know, I can't outshine that.
I'm pretty sure, well, they can.
They can.
I think that we can do it a second time for free, especially if we have a new superintendent, which is a major shift in our board team.
And it probably, it would, it'd probably be beneficial to us to wait. And we did it in April, is that what you're saying, or...
Mm-hmm.
Maybe we should wait a full year.
I'm just assuming it was April because they have on the front.
Yeah, that's what, that was the magic date, that it had to be, we had to all submit.
That's what I'm thinking, if we've got a new superintendent coming in, I'm not sure that this data is going to be relevant at this point.
In some of the areas, yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
I think in many of the areas it is, but I think there are some that things are going to, may change. They may not.
Other thoughts? No more? Liz?
I would love to get some feedback from MASB because this is data and it's data that we essentially created among us, based on the answer to our question. But it doesn't necessarily tell us what's important or what the next steps are. And just because something, you know, the answer is divided among us doesn't necessarily mean it's a bad thing, because we're all different people and we bring different things to the table. So I would appreciate help knowing what kind of things we need to focus on and how we can interpret this data in light of getting a new superintendent in. I don't necessarily think we have to wait until we have a new superintendent, because this is a board evaluation and not a superintendent evaluation. And I think that when we have the time right now while we're still looking for a new superintendent, it's an opportunity for us to become more cohesive as a board and prepare ourselves for the new superintendent.
Diane?
I'm going to agree with Liz. I would like to see the write-up from this data. I think after we get a new super, so that we know where, kind of gives us where we're at and things maybe that we need to work on now. Once we have a new superintendent, I agree, you know, maybe next spring, next April, it would absolutely bother us to go through and do this again because we will be completely different. But I still think it'll be interesting to get the write-up and the recommendations from this.
Liz?
I like the idea of doing this again after a period of time. Doing it just once is almost meaningless. If we don't do it a second time, then we don't know if we've grown.
Okay. Diane?
That's a good point. And I do think that I'm interested to see, you know, what an outside source would provide us. Just because we haven't had written, you know, documentation evaluation. So I'm just interested to see, you know, if that would be helpful to a war or not. So I would support it and, you know, that will give us an idea of whether we want to pursue the written feedback in the future or if that's really not a good option. So being the less expensive of an option and the less time-consuming option with our schedule right now, that's probably the way to go in my opinion.
Okay. So you're talking about a written recommendation based on the report, yeah?
Correct.
Would you like me to contact MASB and see what our next steps are and get back to the board?
Great.
That works for that.
One thing that I would like to bring up, because we have not had a study session since this situation occurred, I would like to make sure that we are adhering to MASB's recommendation a few months back, that we not discuss board business on social media, on our personal social media. The reason for that is that we can get into an awful lot of trouble with violating the Open Meetings Act. If we put things up on social media, whether we like them or don't like them, agree with them, disagree with them, whatever, if we have more than two other individuals who are on the board comment on that, we are then in violation of the Open Meetings Act, because we are then deliberating board business in social media. And I would like to make sure that this kind of thing does not occur. It's very, very important. On top of it, it goes against the whole concept of us working together as a team on issues. If we have thoughts, we absolutely need to share them with one another. But I think it's very, very important that we do one another the respect and the courtesy of sharing them with each other and not on social media in other areas. So both as professional courtesies to one another and to make certain that we are in compliance with the Open Meetings Act, this letter and the sphere of law, I want to make sure that we are not discussing board business on our personal social media. We do have a district Facebook, which is, the purpose of that is to disseminate district information. But we certainly don't want to be discussing that on our personal, because it gets, it gets surprising, it gets awkward, it gets frustrating. No one's very happy when it occurs. So I want to make sure that we are in agreement on that. That's my thought on it and it's based on what MASB has asked of us, has requested, has recommended. Are there any other thoughts on this topic before we go on to the next item? Yep? All right. Are we in agreement not to discuss deliberating board business on our personal social media? Is that something that this board agrees with or not?
Yeah, you'd get into a lot of trouble, as you said, with open meetings.
Yeah, that's what, we were warned. We have been officially warned, that's admirable, in an official workshop of the board. But is this board in agreement to follow that?
Absolutely.
I don't have much of choice.
Yeah. Are we okay, are you okay with that? Yes? If anybody, there's not a lot of commenting going on, there's just a lot of headshots. Does anybody not all right with this? Does anyone disagree and think that we should be able to do that? Because I would like everyone to be in agreement, either we do it or we don't. Is anyone disagreeing with that?
No, that's exactly what, I mean, the seminars that we've been to, that's exactly what they caution you not to do, is to discuss board business in the social media or actually outside of any of the meetings, as a deliberation.
Liz? I see it as an offshoot. If someone were to approach me and ask a question that had to do with board business, my instinct would be to either refer to you or to Andrea, so that they can get more appropriate and official answers and response, and furthermore, so that you know what's going on, as is important and vital. But I don't think that as a trustee, I have the inclination or the authority to respond to them on my own.
Any other thoughts on this, on the issue of social media regarding board business? Okay. Last item on Committee of the Whole is October Board Workshop Topics. We do have one of our two scheduled board workshops coming up, so we'd like to get thoughts on things we want to cover in that workshop and, because sometimes we decide to do the workshop on our own, sometimes we decide to bring in MASB or another authority or representative to assist or facilitate that. But we need to get some suggestions for things that you may want us to cover in our next upcoming board workshop.
October.
October 12th and then not again until March 14th.
Yes, we have two per year that are built into our calendar. Diane?
How many, and board members, would you be interested in seeing if it's possible to have someone to help MasB on the October workshop date?
I don't think we've had anybody from MASB in a while.
It's been probably a year or two.
With the intent of working at this, is that...
That's a great idea.
Well, Scott, just here.
Seems like it's been a while.
It hasn't been a couple of years. It was just...
Within a year?
Since I've been here.
He's been here.
Yes, it was like...
It was this year.
Yeah.
Okay.
We agreed that we want to have someone to help MasB and look at this with us or, didn't we, or no?
Well, we said we want to get information about the written discussion.
Okay.
The other suggestion...
Yeah, with our...
The other suggestion here, with our, the other suggestion is to take that board workshop time that's already built in there, that's going to be, if all works out as it's planned right now, that's potentially when we will have a new superintendent seated. We can take that board workshop time as a board superintendent time to, because to assimilate, to go over our procedures and so forth, go over our expectations, because it's been stated, and I believe it's correct, that every time you get a new board member, you have, in essence, have a new team, certainly when you have a new superintendent, we have a new team. So we can also take that October time and use it in that manner. Some districts take a shorter workshop time over an evening to do that, some have even gone as far as a retreat to what in, we think of retreats being off-site, we don't even have to be off-site, but rather some intense time, you know, Friday night, all day Saturday, or simply maybe only, the only day, all-day Saturday portion, but some really time to get to know one another, get to go over our procedures, our expectations, et cetera. We can also do that with our October workshop period. Dan?
I would like that, even if, let's say, the 12th doesn't happen, it appears that we have a December 1st date that's open, and that we don't have a meeting by then, I would assume. If it doesn't work out by the 12th, maybe that's an alternative, alternative date, but I do think getting some time with a new superintendent would be important.
Okay. And we don't even, if, say we're close to a new person being seated at that time, if it's not even on October 12th, if we're going to use, utilize a different day, if we're going to do a Saturday, we can bump that workshop to a Saturday. We don't have to hold that October 12th date, the October 12th date is put in there as time set aside for that. But if we need a longer day and we decide to do a weekend day, then we could do, we could bump that a few weeks or whatever, a month, so even if we need to go out as far as December 1st, we chose a different day of the month. Thoughts on that? Is this really a group decision? Kenny?
I think it's going to be vital for us to sit down in a more relaxed atmosphere, kick back, and really talk about what our expectations are, you know, talk to the superintendent, how, you know, how we operate, what we do, what their expectations are, so that we get off on the right foot, that we're providing each other with the information, feedback that we're expecting. And it's hard, because with seven different people, we have different, seven different levels of expectations of what is sufficient information and what we want to get as information, or how we want information related to us. It really needs to be defined, and again, it's that consensus thing. We need to come to a happy medium about, you know, what, one, a happy medium about what's, what our expectations are, and two, that everybody knows what the, what's required and how, you know, how we go to meet this, and, you know, in different situations. And I think it's really going to be important for us to do that soon after we get the new superintendent in. And I would urge us to take at least a day on a Saturday, just to sit down and make that happen. I think the comfort level is, and the uptake on, you know, the learning curve, it's going to flatten that out a lot.
I agree with you. I think it's, I think it's very, very important and it's sort of better after we get a new superintendent. Diane?
Does MLI, part of the package, was that, that they do a facilitation of some sort?
I think they get right.
In fact, don't they have a workshops at home with us in September?
Well, it will be, during September, it will still be during the whole hiring process, so we may have time scheduled.
I thought they were going to do a workshop, they had mentioned, I don't have my calendar here, I had something on my calendar when we met. I thought he had mentioned something about doing a workshop to sort of talk us.
I don't remember when.
Yeah, for the interviews and stuff.
Right, right, that's where, we're going through applications. Yeah, that's in order to go through the applications. Yep, that's, and that's to make sure.
That's not related to this at all.
Right, that will be a couple steps before this.
I thought they were going to do one with the superintendent.
Yeah, it's hard to remember.
I'll have to look up, I didn't bring my dates with, for that process with me, but we can check the dates, but you're right, I mean, we definitely do have some time scheduled with MLI in the interviewing process, but we'll have to make sure, and I know that MLI does provide the superintendent a lot of mentoring and feedback for that whole first year, but whether or not they already have built into their fee schedule a facilitation.
A workshop.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have to check on that. So, and whether or not it's, it sounds like whether or not it's included with the MLI, or whether we're going to facilitate that on our own or with the assistance of MASB, that there's interest in this group. I think what we're all remembering is the session at which we're going to choose the individuals who we're going to interview. I know that's a workshop with MLI.
For the interview.
That's, well, we're going to get down to ideally six candidates to interview. I know that they're going to be working with us in that, and that's going to be in a closed session per law. It's worth, you know, the candidates are permissible to gather. I think that's the date. I'll double-check on the date, I don't remember the date, but I remember the function of the meeting. All right. It sounds like we're shifting a little bit more toward, we want to use our workshop time for board superintendent time. Okay. Are we still wanting Diane to check into the option on the written analysis of this?
I'll just get the information and then send it to them.
Yep, okay. And Diane, when you talk to them, will you also ask them if they offer that second, if it's free, this, no, well, I mean, if it's, if we decide to do this next April, if it's free to do the daddy gathering next April also? So kind of both problems of that? Okay. Anything else on those topics? All right. That is the end of our agenda this evening. Anything else that you would like to ask them? I covered everything I knew I had on mine, so.
I just want to remind everyone about the volunteer school tomorrow. Looks like no rain.
Yay.
A little bit of cloud cover, which will be nice for the kids leading the line with bouncers and using the bouncers.
From what I understand, from Jill too, we have a lot of volunteers this year.
We have a ton of volunteers. I think we have a lot of kids eager to get hours or put in help and things, so we've got a great, great response.
Yep.
Great response. And as you know, great planning by Katie and Stacy. They've just done a tremendous job taking it over this year, and good news for the foundation that they share, they are already in the black because of some corporate donations and other donations that they've received, so we anticipate it being just a wonderful, wonderfully, last year we were on pins and needles watching the weather radar about 10:00 AM, the three, yeah, the last couple of years. So we're pleased, I think we've done some of it this year.
Yep.
I think it was the lion, maybe it was the lion, it kicked off the season.
All righty, and tomorrow, you can hang around and chat, or you can actually get an early evening home if you'd like. So we're adjourned, thank you, come me out tonight, guys?
Thank you.
I didn't write it down.
If they do, it'll be amazing.
You didn't, okay. I'll go on.
But I do have some.
Why in the paper?
Oh, yeah, I think it's in the paper.
Whenever, whenever any two, whenever any topic is on the agenda. I don't want to answer questions.
No, 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 but the president just really just made a comment because I, I'm the one who's making people on Facebook, I just, whatever, I don't know. However, what was written here was information I was told by my staff and parents that this was not in the act.
Then by only, if that's a matter of going through this, and, you know, administration said this, and as a board member, I think.
I thought maybe it was your portico off as you're off the other room.
Any comments or concerns they had, whenever, any of them, at the general meeting. And this was absolutely, this is one of the things we talked about. So if you have questions on it, absolutely, because it was at board meetings that we were informed that the folks at Rosedale and Cleveland where people were asking even a year or two prior to this, that they were asking for the Great Start Reading this program to come back into their system, because it was beneficial for the Great Start Reading this program specifically to be where those children would be then going on to kindergarten through the fourth grade, so that was already being discussed, so absolutely, if you've got questions and comments on an item that's coming before discussion before the board, that's the place, drop to the board, at the board meeting where we're discussing that topic. So, and besides, this was, and that's exactly what that board referred to, and they absolutely had then. Jonathan Winterman and our principal at Cleveland had been asking for the Great Start Reading program to come into their building specifically, so that those children have affirmation to the building a year earlier, and we're going to hire them, so that those people are, the teachers can meet the needs of those, I mean, we do schoolers, because they, they went to preschool teachers for that year. So there's definitely some things of that.
Or says, they're exactly the player, I'm concerned, that's if you don't want to.
I mean, how many, right, well, me, that's.
Four, of course, required, but they still have to shoot the same number.
They were told us in private.
Well, you're saying that some people disagree with that, but other administrators. Oh, no problem. So when administrators were asking, kids, coming in there and saying that there was educational benefit to them needing those buildings, absolutely, true statement.
So let's ask, let's ask this question.
Oh, no, that's okay. All right, no worries.
Yeah, can I get your answer?
He wants to take Spanish ones.
So yes, but absolutely, I mean, anytime, any topic is coming before the board, that's the, that's what we need to ask it, that's why we have board meetings.
What, you're thinking a year old school?
If anybody has questions or answers or other information.
A kid takes algebra one.
It's just a little bit different, but.
They will fill the algebra one. Oh, radical.
Oh, no, I was going to say, if I was thinking too many and other people.
I mean, I'm trying to obviously follow that. So we have, what algebra one, I think, is probably the shortest version, they're just taking it outside of the high school. No, that's wonderful, and then they'll have quite a different building some years later.
Wednesday morning, taking this.
I can have it Wednesday morning.
In the evening. I'll think of it right now.
Absolutely. Having met four credits of BLA, rather saying.
West Porsche wasn't there. That was all.
To get the total of 23 credits to graduate.
I think in this case, I don't understand, they would be okay with that?
Right.
So you go on, so I was reading on here, and it says in here, when the student comes back after having met those classes.
It's over two years, correct?
And it's over two years.
Okay.
And that was it.
Okay.
When we walked in.
So when the student comes back. The student, probably, goes to the school to issue the AP English classes.
Yeah, because of the wood floors.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So they could take additional English classes by taking the AP English classes. English classes. So my question is, why wouldn't the kid just stay in, take the accelerated classes and then move into the AP classes?
The lunchroom was, and I knew where the gym was. Why do you run the, when you walk behind it?
Many schools, it just makes it, don't offer, stay here.
It's going to be, I want to see what it's going to be.